If you need another cup of coffee, please grab that now. We're going to get started here in just a minute or two. All right, while he is finishing up instructions for the candidates, just a few notes, especially for any of you who missed my little spiel at the beginning. This will all be recorded. It will replay on the city's TV channel. We're also going to put it on the chambers YouTube page early next week. So feel free to share with friends and family, re-watch if you missed any of the questions. Again, thank you so much to our public affairs season-long sponsors. That would be the Brookings Economic Development Corporation, Vision Brookings, and of course, Cool Beans Coffee. Big thank you to Kurt and his team for providing that. So please feel free to get up and help yourself throughout the rest of the morning. Another big thank you to our public affairs task force. So Russ Halgerson, Larry Tiedemann, Kayla Gullickson, and LeAnn Pierce. We couldn't do this stuff without them, so we're just so thankful. We will go ahead and get started here. Oh, I can't forget. Big, big, big thank you to Mike Bartley for coming out of retirement and moderating for us today. So we will go ahead and get started with candidates. They each get three minutes to introduce, and then we will dive into your questions. If you would like to submit more questions, we have paper in the back of the room. You can write a question down, and they'll bring it up for us.
All right, thank you very much. We will get started. You have our candidates up here. I address them by first name. I didn't tell them that's good. So it's going to be Holly, Bonnie, and Al. Or do you prefer Alan? Whatever, Al or Alan, what do you like?
Al is best.
Al is best? All right, that's what we'll do. Al, I'll cross off the A N here. All right, so we're going to start with opening comments. Please skip it to three minutes. We have a timer here. And we're going to start with Bonnie.
Hi, I'd like to thank everyone, the chamber, and the audience, Cool Beans, for showing up today. I've served on city council for the past three years. I'm an epidemiologist, author, and what I consider a community advocate. I retired from SDSU in 2021, and I now write historical novels. I've been a resident of Brookings for 28 years. We raised four children here, and I know that Brookings is exceptional. My campaign slogan is heart, smarts, and grit. The hearts, well, Brookings is a place where people take responsibility for others and care for others. It is a community in which every individual is valued. I've had years of volunteering. I was on the Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors, where I served on the Finance Committee and the Club Strategic Growth and Building Committee. I was a jury moderator for the Brookings Teen Court, a CASA volunteer, and the team director for the Brookings Rangers Girls Varsity Hockey. I am aware, from all those experiences, of the issues that face our youth today. As far as smarts, I believe that decisions should be well-informed and based on data, and that problems are solved through collaboration. For the last 30 years, I had primary responsibility, this is before I retired, of developing a research program and the budgets that went with that program. I have spent my life analyzing and interpreting data, and I understand and appreciate the process. This process is what needs to be happening on city council and what I feel like I can contribute. My expertise in public health is evident from my appointment to Governor Dugard's Task Force on Infant Mortality. I've collaborated extensively with the Tribal Chairman Health Board and Epidemiology Center, and also the South Dakota Department of Health. I am good at collaboration and consensus building. The grit, I'm a hard worker. I have the time and energy to listen and understand people, and most of all, I care. If re-elected, I will continue to lead with my heart, analyze the facts, and work tirelessly to keep Brookings strong, connected, and forward-thinking. And I would appreciate your vote next week, that's early voting, or on April 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly, for your comments.
Well, I want to start out by thanking the chamber, the sponsors, our moderator, the volunteers today, my fellow candidates, and those who are joining us today in person or watching from TV or on a recording. Thank you for being engaged in this process. I'm Holly Tilton Burn, and I'm running for reelection to the Brookings City Council. Over the last eight years, it has been an absolute privilege to be able to serve all of you as a council member, and I really hope to be able to have the opportunity to continue that service. A little bit of information about myself. I am a fourth-generation Brookings County resident, always proud to say that I graduated grade school, middle school, high school, and college, right here in Brookings. In addition to council, I am the Associate Vice President for Human Resources for a local nonprofit, and I've been in the nonprofit industry for over 16 years. Of all the titles I have, the one that is closest to my heart is that of mom. I have a nine-year-old, a six-year-old, and a four-year-old, so when people talk about free time, I have no idea what that means. From a young age, I really believed that it is incredibly important to be engaged in your community. I started my service with the city through the Sustainability Council. I was a member on that council, and then worked my way up to being the chair. I have since served on many committees. I supported the Humane Society through a task force several years ago. I have been on several different downtown committees or task forces, and I'm currently a board member for the Domestic Abuse Shelter, and I am on the committee exploring the Economic Development merger. As a council member, I've consistently advocated for transparency, citizen engagement, fostering a welcoming and inclusive community, being a responsible steward of tax dollars through sustainable growth, and really, when we talk about sustainability, focusing on the three pillars of social sustainability, economic sustainability, and environmental sustainability. If you'd like a little bit more information about me, I do have a website, hollyforbrookings.com, and you can find me on Facebook by searching Holly for Brookings. As citizens, it's really important to be engaged, and it's important to participate in our community. And one of the most impactful ways that we can do that is by being informed and voting. Local elections are perhaps the ones that are most impactful to our day-to-day lives. This year, through our local election, our community will not only be selecting two council members, but also school board, as we just heard from those candidates, and also choosing whether or not to update language for our city charter. I urge every one of you to learn as much as you can about all of the candidates and the issue on the ballot, and use your vote to utilize your voice. Early voting begins Monday, the 24th, and you can vote here in the City Government Center on the first floor, or you can vote at any of the polling stations on April 8th. I look forward to answering all the questions today, and I would invite you all to get in touch with me if you have any more questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Al, your opening comments.
Didn't have to hold the button, you just have to touch it. Good morning. I'm Al Ostrom, running for Brookings City Council. I ran for city council last year, came up a tad bit short. I've been a resident of Brookings for 30 years. I've been involved in small business for 35 years. I've raised my family here in Brookings after graduating from SDSU. In the process of raising my children here, I have been involved in a lot of different aspects of Brookings and the surrounding area. I can't even begin to count the number of softball, T-ball, baseball, hockey organizations that I've been a part of and participated in. But the number one thing that I'm looking for is to be an advocate for the citizens of Brookings. My platform last year is the same this year. Listen, learn, lead. A person cannot make a decision about anything unless you listen to the people around you and the people you represent. That's the number-one step. Until that step is completed, you can't begin to learn. Once you've taken all the data from the people you represent, you can collaborate that together and learn. Once you have learned that, that's when you can start to lead. But you can't do a good job of leading unless you first start with the learning. When I started this campaign, the only thing that I did was took out the petition. From that point forward, it switches to "we," because my goal is to represent the people. It's not for what I want, but it's more for what we, as a community, want. And I'm a huge advocate for the youth of our community. Our youth is one of our biggest assets, and Brookings is a great community, and we need to just keep that moving forward, advocate for the children, because they are our future. They're our future leaders. I can't wait for the day that I can sit out there in the crowd and I can ask questions to the kids that I saw on the baseball field, in softball fields, and in the hockey rink, and have them hopefully be up here answering questions. So again, thank you for being here. Number one thing we can all do as civic duty is, I don't care who you vote for, let's get out there and vote. Let's show Brookings and all the other communities around here that Brookings cares, and we want the people to choose what happens in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll start with some questions. This is a abstract question, so to speak, but it's kind of fun. If the city received a $1 million grant for the city to use any way it wanted, what would you do with it and why? And we'll start with Holly.
I think if the city currently received a million dollars, one of the most important things we'd probably need to do is build a new public safety center. That's been something that's been at the top of our priorities for the last couple of years, and we have been working really hard to be able to fund that without needing to issue a bond. So over the last several years, we've been setting money aside intentionally to be able to pay for that project. And so we could very easily spend a million dollars or more building a public safety center, and so that, I think, would be one of the most important things that we would be facing currently to utilize dollars for.
Thank you. Al?
Well, I think there was a country song a while back about, said, "If I had a million dollars." I can't remember what they decided to do with it, but I think the first thing we'd have to do is, you know, obviously, it's a hypothetical million dollars. Wouldn't that be great? The first thing we'd have to do is take a step back and analyze everything that the city is involved in and make sure the money is spent the greatest. As Holly said, the community's police station has been on the radar for a long time, and obviously, that is at the forefront, and would obviously take a high priority in looking how to spend it. But, you know, like I said, we'd have to take a look at the whole big picture and just make sure that we were fiscally responsible with that money so that whoever it was who gave it to us, we could, you know, look them in the eye and tell them that we spent it the best way possible.
Thank you. Bonnie?
I agree with the public safety center, but I think that that $1 million actually doesn't go very far. We've already been able to put aside about $9 million for that public safety center. We need more than $1 million more. We expect to have that money just because we have been fiscally conservative. We are not planning on bonding the building, and hopefully, if we do have to incur debt, it's going to be minimal. I would like to spend the million dollars maybe in something else. We have the downtown with the recent fire, trying to figure out what to do with that space once the building owners decide what to do. I also think, and Al will appreciate this, the ash bore is going to be a big issue in Brookings over the next three years. We're going to lose about 30% of our trees. Finding ways to get trees planted, treat a certain percent of those trees to minimize the impact of our loss, I think those would be other alternatives for that money.
Thank you. I'm just surprised nobody said pay the moderator. Our next question, this is kind of, a couple people have had this question, and so I'm going to try and put it together as one question. They would like you to provide your thoughts on the proposed merger of the BEDC, which is a Brookings Area Chamber Commiss, Brookings Economic Development Corporation, Visit Brookings, and Town Town Brookings. They would like to know your thoughts on, is it going to save money and how you protect the missions of each identity? And we'll start with Alan.
Well, having a little bit of knowledge of all of those organizations, I was a little disappointed. I received an email from the chamber at, I think it was like 5:00, that this was going to get discussed at the meeting, and the meeting started at 6:00. Unfortunately, I wasn't in a position to get myself here in that amount of time. I think it should have been handled a little bit differently. If I were to be in charge of handling something like that, I think that we should have brought together all the stakeholders, let all the memberships know what we were looking at, and had some discussions before we kind of dived headfirst into it. Looking at the different organizations, they all serve a somewhat different purpose. There might be some overlap, but yet, they're still, each of them are distinct enough that I don't believe if you put them as one that they can do the due process that is needed for each individual organization. The other thing is, they receive public funding. Other than that, they are individual entities. I don't know that it's the city's place to really tell them what to do, so I guess that's my opinion on that.
Thank you. Bonnie, your comments?
Yes, the merger, to me, will strengthen collaboration and improve efficiency. I think there, I mean, there is a merger committee, and they have brought together the boards of those four organizations and have worked with the stakeholders to come up with a plan. The role of the city in that, I think a lot of people have been misinformed. We do not plan on controlling the implementation of that merger. The implementation plan is being drafted by the committee that consists of all four of those organizations, and Holly will actually be able to address this better because she's on that merger committee. We have three representatives on it from the city. But that plan is going to go through the merger committee, it's going to go through the boards, they've been meeting with employees of all those organizations. To me, it's an improvement on the efficiency, and the city will be able to support that since we do do that in our budget.
All right, thank you. Holly?
So I would start by saying this idea was initially brought up in our Economic Development Master Plan, which was established a few years ago. What we have done so far is we have established a committee that is made up of representatives of each of the organizations so that we can discuss what this implementation might look like and what a structure of a new organization could be. The purpose behind exploring this idea of a merger really is to strengthen the goal of those organizations and strengthen the missions. We absolutely intend that each of those missions will continue to be represented in a combined organization. We don't necessarily expect that we will reduce the amount of funding that we provide to them, but instead be better stewards of those dollars by being able to use them in a collaborative way across the board. Right now, each of them have somebody that focuses on media. Each of them has a building that they're paying rent on. So how can we bring those organizations together so they're leveraging those dollars in a more strategic way? Again, it is not the intention of the city to run this organization or to hire the individuals of the organization. That will be the job of the organization itself, and each of the independent organizations certainly do have an option as to whether or not they will be part of a merged organization. And so it's really exciting to see what this could look like in the future.
Thank you. Our next question, I've got several of them here that kind of talk about housing and historic neighborhoods and projects, so we're going to kind of work on it. How would you basically address the rising cost of housing and improve affordable housing? We'll just kind of take that as a separate question, and we'll start with Bonnie.
Yeah, I think that the city has done well by supporting workforce housing. We've worked with developers to apply for grants, state grants, to get those funds. We also have tax increment financing that we've worked with developers on using to get housing projects built. A good example of that is the Drew Clark Buildings down on 15th and 7th. I think that that is one of the biggest. We also, before I was on council, the council had done some stuff with modifying infill requirements. We, as a city, need to worry about where are these houses going to be built, because we are running out of land. I think we need to work at creative ways of increasing the density of housing within the city to help address that housing issue.
Thank you. Holly, your comments?
Yes, so this has been an issue that we've paid attention to for a number of years since I've been on council. Several years ago, we did do a housing study, and that gave us a good idea of how many houses, new houses, we would have to establish in our community, and I'm proud of our community to be able to say that we have not only met that number for the marker point that we're at now, but we've exceeded it. So the inventory of housing is increasing. The city has also done a number of things to be able to help fund and support different affordable housing projects, like the one that Bonnie mentioned regarding the workforce housing on 15th, and will continue to explore those. We also have a team put together called the Development Review Team, where different individuals in the community that are looking to build housing is able to go, talk with the city, talk with different individuals, and if there's something, say with a zoning issue, that maybe is causing the cost of construction to be increased, then we are constantly addressing that and determining whether or not we can adjust our zoning or our policies around building to do it in a safe way, but also in a more affordable way. So we'll continue to explore those types of options.
All right, thank you, Al. Your comments?
Yes, housing is something that comes up a lot, and I definitely am very interested in coming up with a solution to it, although there is no one simple solution. We need more workforce housing, but within workforce housing comes affordable housing. Affordable housing is all over the board, because affordable to one person is not affordable to another. We've heard it mentioned here, the housing project on 15th Street South, wonderful project, although that was city land that was given away. So I don't think that we should be using taxpayer dollars to fund some of these things. We need to be looking at policies that make it easier for developers and builders to build affordable housing. Every cost, every step, every hurdle that's put in front of them adds to the cost, and the cost of all of that ends up at the end user. You can claim that the developer is going to pay for it? Yes, they will be the first person to pay for it, but when it's all said and done, the end user makes the final payment.
Thank you. Kind of a continuation on the same subject, but a little bit different, is how will you help the historic neighborhoods in the community advocate for themselves, especially concerning SDSU's foundation projects and the commercial development along 6th Street? And we'll start that with Holly.
Well, this is an issue that is certainly close to my heart, because I live in a historic district. I live in a historic home, and there is a certain amount of care that you have to give to a home that has older bones, right? And so something that I always try to keep a good pulse on is what the Historic Preservation Commission is doing. A lot of historic preservation issues are handled at the state level, and so we have to be aware of what happens there. But then we do also have our local Historic Preservation Commission that ultimately makes some of the recommendations and some of the decisions around the use of historic buildings, the different construction that happens within our historic districts. We are fortunate to have several different historic districts in this community, and I think that the beauty of our community is only expanded by the beautiful historic homes and buildings that we have. Downtown is a great example of that, and so we'll just continue to look at those policies that revolve around historic buildings and historic districts and make sure that we're being good stewards of those places in our community.
Thank you. Alan, your comments?
I would agree that we need to make sure that we're not erasing history. History is a big part of our community, a big part of our culture. I guess this question brings me back to my listen, learn, lead. As we have needs in the community and we face these obstacles or challenges, my first thing would be is to go out to the community, bring in our community leaders in different areas, and have a sit-down, visit, talk, and listen to what their opinions are so that we can make sure that we're making the best decisions possible for not only our current needs, but also the future needs and the future preservation of our community as well, and just make sure we're making the most educated decision possible.
Thank you. Bonnie?
I pretty much agree with Holly. I think the historic district, residential districts, and the downtown district are what gives Brookings a lot of its character, and if we can do anything to help preserve it, that would be great, but other than that, I have nothing else to add.
All right, thank you. All right, we've got another question here. There's two parts to it, but the first part's most important. How can programming for summer recreation programs be established so everything does not immediately fill up and leaves no room without timing that competition to get into that signup? People work, they don't get their signup, so I don't know if that's a city council question or if it's a park or recreation board question, but that's the question. And we'll start with Alan.
Well, my kids are a little bit past that, so I haven't dealt with that in a couple of years, but we need to do everything we can to support getting youth. If we have youth that want to be involved in activities, we need to do that. And I can tell you, over the years, supporting different teams, I've had my name on the back of T-shirts and everything, and I have always supported youth activities, youth sports. So I guess I would have to, my first thing would be to talk to the Park and Rec Department and find out what they're seeing, or do they need more staff? Do they need more funding? If they need more funding, then I think as a community, we can find that. I've worked on a couple of different projects in the last year. Brookings is a very giving community. If we're willing to get out and work for it, the funding will be there, and we can find it for our kids. It's there. We would just have to find out what the problems are and work together to find a good solution, a sustainable solution.
All right, thank you. Comments from Holly, or excuse me, Bonnie goes next. Sorry.
I ran into this problem maybe last summer when trying to register a granddaughter of mine that was here for a couple weeks. So I completely am sympathetic to parents out there, because we signed up or called 30 seconds after the time, and it was already full. I think that Parks and Rec could increase the number of programs that they offer. One of the things that we're working on, and a lot of this has come up because of the 5th Street Gym and the possibilities of that being worked out as being included under Parks and Rec, is having in one place a listing of all of the gyms around town that are accessible, and having that on Parks and Rec. When our open gyms, I mean, we have the school gyms, we have the church gyms, we have recs, you know, places that are not city-owned but have gyms available. So I think that we could do a better way of advertising that through Parks and Rec.
Thank you. Holly, your comments?
As a mom to three young kids, these are programs that I utilize a lot, and I'm also one of those folks that I'm eagerly awaiting on my phone, hitting refresh to get the signup link to work. One recent change that the Parks Department did do is they changed the time of when registration opens. It used to be that it would open at midnight, and that was challenging, because then there were parents waiting up until midnight to sign up their kids. We did recently change that to, I can't remember if it's 6:00 PM or 7:00 PM, but it's a more accessible time for folks to be able to get on and sign their kids up. One of the things that Brookings does invest in the most is our Park and Rec Department. It's one of the largest items in our budget, and so if we are to expand the number of seats and the number of programs, then that is going to come along with a cost. And so I think one creative way that we could do some of that is maybe through public-private partnerships. We see some of that already in our Park and Rec booklet. You'll notice that a lot of the activities that are in there are actually privately run, or they're community organizations that are running some of these programs. It's not all just city programs. And so to be able to continue to provide those opportunities through public-private partnership, I think will be important.
All right, thank you. Next question is kind of a combination of a couple. As we look at the Brookings community and our workforce needs and our workforce recruitment, we've already addressed a little bit- we've already addressed a little bit with affordable housing and how each of you would address that. But there's also a growing need in our community for childcare, childcare crisis. What would you do to help with the childcare crisis? And we'll start with Bonnie.
The city did provide ARPA funding for the childcare initiative, so we have been working in that area and I hope that we will continue to support it to some extent. But I think it's not just the issues with getting work, workers here, but it's not just childcare. It is the housing issue and it's also quality of life issues where Parks and Rec comes into that and other things other than just childcare. I think it's, it's a broader issue that we're coming up against in trying to get people to Brookings.
Thank you. Holly, your comments?
So like Bonnie said, the city did fund the childcare collaborative efforts that are happening right now, gave a significant amount of funding through the ARPA dollars to be able to help with that problem. Again, as a parent, I'm very aware of the issues that several folks face when it comes to finding childcare. And so it is a real issue when it comes to the ability for young families to come to our community and work. And so I think in addition to the great work that the childcare collaborative is doing, that's a partnership between the school district, Boys and Girls Club, SDSU and others, I think in addition to that work, we can be supporting other individuals that want to be certified daycare providers in our community and providing resources and information about how they can go about doing that. Because the more providers we're able to have in this community, the lower number of needs that are, that we're going to find.
Thank you. Al, your comments?
I would say that the root of all of that comes back to housing. As Holly said, you know, if we could have more providers, that would be great. The one obstacle to that is to become a provider, you have to have a facility in order to provide. As a business owner, I can attest recruiting workforce in Brookings is very difficult because half of my workforce drives from outside of Brookings. They're coming from Aurora, they're coming from Lake Benton, they're coming from Elkton, Arlington, Lake Preston. And it's a struggle to keep them in Brookings because all of a sudden, they can take a $2 pay cut, save their mileage, save their time. So I have to compensate for that and pay them more. And where does that go? Like I said earlier, it all goes to the end user. So I think at the root of the problem, if we can find a sustainable solution or a sustainable path forward for our housing problem, I think it'll be kind of a domino effect to help with a lot of other issues within our community.
All right, thank you. Our next question, some of you addressed in your opening comments about the funding for a new police building. A question asks you to each opine on why the need for a new police building and would you support the use of parks land for the new building or where would you suggest it go? And we'll start that with Holly.
So I think as far as the need for a new facility, all a person has to do is go tour the police department and it becomes very obvious that there is a need for a new police department. That building is quite aged and, and it's time. For a community our size, we really should have a, a well-maintained building that is meeting all of the needs of, of our police department. In terms of location, we have been exploring several different options, including some parklands. We have to make sure that wherever it's located, it's in a spot that can easily respond to any needs of the community. So hopefully somewhere that's a little bit centrally located. We have to make sure there's enough size to be able to hold the footprint of that facility. The current police department also is a fire station and so we're weighing whether or not the new facility would still include that fire station or if the fire station would be maintained on the current location. So there's a lot of different pieces that go into this and we are exploring all options while also looking at the price tag of those options.
All right, thank you. Alan, your comments?
Well, first and foremost, our police department is very vital to our community and they need, whatever they need for a facility, resources, stuff, we need to support that. As far as the location, you know, I don't know what other locations have been looked at, but you know, I'd love the current location. I mean, it's right in the heart of our community. So I don't know how that plays into what can make it happen. Just with my background and whatnot, I, I think using parkland would be my last choice. I would want to make sure that every other option was explored before we took away parkland. But like I said, first and foremost, we need to make sure that the police force and the fire department as well have the facilities and the resources they need to do their job. Because in the unfortunate event that we all ever have to dial that 911, we want them to be there and we want them to have the tools and resources necessary to be there.
Thank you. Bonnie, your comments?
Yeah, I think if the parkland is used, it needs to be replaced by other parkland somewhere else in the city. And the areas that we've looked at that are parkland, we've always looked at it in terms of what can replace that park somewhere else. I agree with Holly. Anyone who has a question about whether or not this building is needed should take a tour. I'm sure Michael Drake back there, police chief, will be happy to give people a tour. The fire engines are sitting on cement floors that are being held up by six pillars. The 911 computers are being cooled by a whole string of little box fans blowing on them. I mean, this is not the way a safety center should be. It is not safe and it, I don't think it's a healthy environment.
All right, thank you. All right, move on to another question. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing Brookings in the next 10 years? We're stretching this out a ways. And how should the city respond to those challenges? And we'll start with Bonnie. Oh no, excuse me. Al?
10 years, that's a long ways out, but anybody who's raised children, you'll find out that goes by in the blink of an eye. And I think that's why it's maybe necessary to look 10 years out. It's going to bring us back to housing. Brookings is a little bit landlocked. We can't spread in all directions. It's just not possible. But on the other hand, Brookings is going to continue to grow. We've seen that. Brookings is very special in that way. Between what we have currently with the university and everything around us, we are fortunate enough that we don't see the highs and the lows that a lot of communities do. So we will continue to grow. And the best part to navigate that is to bring in our community knowledge. The first thing I would do is want to sit down and talk to all of our realtors, our builders, our developers, our employers and come up with a good, well, basically back to listen, learn, lead. You know, I have my opinion on it, but I would love to hear a whole lot of other opinions on it so that I could learn and also lead in that direction.
Thank you. Bonnie?
I think growth and development is going to be a big issue over the next 10 years with the 20th Street exit off of I-29 and all the development that's going on down there, as well as the marketplace, which ground will break next week on that development. There's going to be, end up being a lot of building on the east side of the city. Zoning issues are going to come up or have come up. We need to make sure that corridor overlay districts are enforced along 20th Street and it's, it's going to be growth and development. And we need to try to decide whether or not we want to have the long-term financial commitment for building further out rather than up. And I, I'm a firm believer of not building out because that does get to be very expensive. And if we do it that way, we need to work with the developers and realtors to figure out how to best do it financially, so.
Thank you. Holly?
So I think some of the most important issues are ones that we've already talked about, right? So workforce development, affordable housing, childcare. In addition to those things, I think making sure that we maintain a balanced budget is going to continue to be very important, especially as we see the cost of things continue to rise. Right now, we're a very fortunate community in that we have a lot of really healthy revenue and we're, we're really good stewards of that dollar, those dollars, making sure that we do always have a very balanced budget. But as we continue to see growth, like Bonnie said, along 20th and with the marketplace, it's going to be really important to make sure that growth is smart growth. Sometimes when growth happens really fast, you forget to look at some of the zoning issues and some of the aesthetic issues that go along with that development. So making sure that we're keeping those in mind as we continue to see construction and building. And then something that will always be very important is engagement with our community, making sure that we have that constant communication and that we're hearing from the people. Because if we aren't hearing from citizens about what's important to them, then we might not know what's the most important thing in the community.
Thank you. Any follow-ups from anybody on that? I thought I'd give you a chance because we're going to continue with infrastructure issues with a combined couple of questions. Basically, the questionnaires are asking what infrastructure improvements do you see as most critical in the next term, which is four years, I assume? What are your priorities to ensure that infrastructure keeps up with the growth of the city of Brookings? And we'll start with Bonnie.
Two of them come to the top of my head right away. One of them is the golf course and the water sourcing and irrigation system out there. The council and the city have been trying to identify a water source. I think it's important that we identify a safe water source. I am concerned about the PFAS bill that 3M had several years ago and that chemical is, is moving south. So we don't want to be tapping into a well on the south side of, down by the golf course that's then going to spray PFAS all over the golf course and contaminate that area. So I think the water source, and I feel pretty strong about this, needs to be a safe water source, even if it's just going on ground. I also think, I'll follow up later on that. I just got cut off.
Holly, your comments?
So I think one of the things the city currently does really well is we have a capital improvement plan. So we look ahead 10 years to see what, what it is we need to be investing in and make sure that we have a timeline so that we can protect not only the cost of those projects, but make sure that the projections of our revenue meet that. And so continuing to look at that plan and making sure that we're really evaluating what's on the docket for those improvements, I think is going to be important. Bonnie mentioned a couple that obviously are, are important issues. The water for the golf course, clean, safe drinking water. And water just tends to be a theme with some of these improvements. And so groundwater and surface water are things that we've really been looking at a lot. We've very recently implemented some new building policies so that you have to sort of raise things that are in certain lower level land so that you're avoiding some flooding issues. And I think that as we often see times of flood versus times of drought, it's just going to be a continuing issue that we need to focus on, making sure that we're managing our water well.
Thank you. Al, your comments?
Well, first thing we, I would do is, you know, we have BMU, Brookings Municipal Utilities. I think they're on top of infrastructure in a very good way. Owning a fleet of trucks that have navigated Brookings the last couple of years, I can tell you, there's a lot of pipe going in the ground, a lot of detours. So I think that they are doing a good job of trying to keep up with that, with their new water treatment plant and stuff. But it's something that you always have to keep looking at and looking forward, trying to be a step ahead. As Bonnie and Holly both mentioned, it's kind of crazy how one year we're talking about trying to find water for the golf course and the next year we're talking about how to keep floodwaters off private land, you know? There's, it's a constant battle with all that and a person has to be open-minded and on their toes. And I like to think of myself as a multitasking problem solver. You know, if there's a problem, then we need to bear down and look at the best options that are out there and get after it. If anybody asks me, when does the work, when is the work done? I said, the work will be done when it is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question for each of you is to provide your thoughts on the proposed changes to our city charter. And we'll start with Holly.
So the proposed changes with the city charter actually started after a really deep dive that a small committee of the city council did of our governance and ends policies. We hadn't done a review of those in several years. It was time to do that and I was lucky enough to serve on that small task force that did that deep dive. As part of that deep dive, we also looked at the city charter. Law regulates that any changes to our city charter have to be voted on. And so in order to get the proper amount of community involvement in the, the draft language for that, we established a committee that was made up of very talented and educated individuals that worked with input from community members through forums, meetings with stakeholders, and they drafted the language that you'll see on the ballot. Ultimately, it will be the decision of the people as to whether or not we choose to implement those changes to our charter. If those changes aren't made, then the current language will still exist. Some of the good things about the proposed language is that it does eliminate some unnecessary language that doesn't need to be in there anymore. It clarifies some of the issues around the city council's responsibility for hiring the city attorney and city clerk to make sure there's a good checks and balances there between the different leaders of our community structure and also making sure that Brookings is an inclusive community. So I look forward to see what the community members decide on that.
Thank you. Al, your comments?
As Holly stated, a lot of the stuff that I have read through that city charter review is a lot of cleaning up a lot of different languages and stuff. As far as the checks and balances, I'm not a firm believer that this is taking us in the right direction. I think that our forefathers were very smart in how they set up checks and balances and different levels of government. I think we need to be going the other direction. And this is nothing against our current city manager, but I think the way that it's going, is proposed would put him susceptible to a lot of scrutiny as to how money is spent and people and, you know, resources of your employees are handled. I think there's a better way to do it. Currently, because of that, I'm not in favor of it as a whole. Quick fun fact, the committee that was put together to study this, 30% of them didn't vote in last year's election. I think we could have done a little bit more thorough job of selecting that committee to get more of a diverse opinion from the community.
Thank you. Bonnie, your comments?
Yeah, other than the cleaning up of the charter, I think, as Holly mentioned, the biggest difference is that there's actual language in there that the city manager will be responsible for hiring and evaluating the city clerk and the city lawyer in conjunction with the council. And I think that's important because the council, the way it's written now, it sounds like the council is the one that's supervising the city lawyer and the city clerk. We don't work with them every day. It's hard for us to really evaluate them. So this change in the charter, to me, isn't changing so much how things are happening because we still, we're the boss of the city manager. We oversee the city manager. So we're still, if we want to talk to the lawyer or the city clerk, we can still request that without the city manager being present. I mean, we have the final say on that. So I don't think it's an issue.
All right, thank you, Bonnie. All right, the next question, we're getting close to the end here, I think. If elected to the city council, what would be your top three priorities? And we'll start with Al.
Well, number one, like I say, I want to be involved, listening to the community. I want to have conversations with the community. I want the community to reach out to me. I want to engage with the community. I want the community to be engaged with the council. I want complete transparency of everything that is happening so that all of our stakeholders, residents of our community are aware 100% what's going on, what's coming up. They have the ability to participate, let their opinions be heard, make sure that their voices are listened to so that we can make the best, most informed decisions possible. And the best, and the last thing is keep Brookings moving forward. We have a great community. We need to keep investing in it, making sure we're doing, spending our best dollars to get the most bang for our buck. And like I say, it all comes down to my number one priority is making Brookings a better place for our children. As I stated before, our children is our best asset.
Bonnie, your comments?
Yeah, back to the safety center. I think that should be the council and the city's top priority. I also think with the recent fire downtown, I think the revitalization of downtown Brookings should be a priority. It is what, to me, gives Brookings its soul. There are a lot of people that worked on that committee, the downtown Brookings, that have some really great ideas. We have the downtown Brookings master plan and I would like to see that move along. I think the ash bore is a really big, going to be a bigger problem that we really need to look at and how to improve or get forestry the resources to address that. And, you know, we have supported the initiatives for reimbursement of tree planting by residents. I think we could do, continue with those types of programs.
All right, thank you. We're, we have, oh, Holly? Did I get you, Holly?
I do have some priorities too.
You get the last comments.
So I would say one of the more immediate priorities will be hiring a new city attorney. Our very skilled city attorney, Steve Britzman, who has been our attorney for many, many years, is retiring in April. And so like we said, the city council is responsible for selecting the city attorney. And so that'll be one of the more immediate priorities. I think another important priority is going to be smart and efficient development, whether that's development of our public safety center, development of downtown, development of the marketplace, or any other area of our community. Making sure that we're doing that in a smart and well-planned way is going to be incredibly important. And then something that's always been a priority of mine is fostering great community involvement through things like transparency, collaboration, and being a good steward. And so that will remain one of my priorities for as long as I'm allowed to serve on council.
All right, thank you. I apologize. I did that mistake on purpose, so don't ask me to do this again. We've had all our questions. We're down to our closing statements and we'll start with Bonnie.
It's been a great pleasure working with the city council and the city staff to serve the Brookings community these past three years. We've done a lot. We've worked on food insecurity and affordable housing. We funded the Ivy Center and the Childcare Initiative. There's groundbreaking on the marketplace that's happening. And then the revitalization of downtown has begun with the awarding of the grants. The development in the south and east sides of Brookings has made me more, and I think the council, more aware of the limited land that's available for development. And I really do think we need to be creative and start thinking about building up rather than out and maybe perhaps even redevelopment rather than development or other creative ideas. We need to figure that part out. Parks rec and forestry, I mean, we have the pickleball complex. We've expanded the playgrounds and the trails. We've had increased programming, increased membership at the activity center for us older people. I don't think anyone up here is that old yet. Maybe Al. No. But we, and again, the ash bore, I mean, forestry is going to need a lot there and we need to support those initiatives. Fiscal responsibility, we don't overspend. I mean, you can get on to the city website and look at every single line item of the budget down to what each department pays to social security. I mean, it's all there, so we're extremely transparent. The city has built reserves. We have minimal debt. Our property rate, tax rate is one of the lowest in South Dakota for a municipality of this size. We've been building up those reserves and I think that not having to go for a bond to replace that safety center is evidence of that. As far as community engagement, we have held these coffees. We've been at public events. We've presented at service and community organizations. In 2022 and 2023, we had, we participated in about 10 events per year, the council as a whole. In 2024, we had over 60 of these events. And this year, in 2025, just based on the first two months, we will have 100 of these events that we're participating in. So, you know, we found that the council with coffee didn't work that well, so we started going to community service organizations. We're trying to figure out how to get the community involvement. And I don't know how else to do it other than knock on individual doors, which I don't think would work real well. Exciting things are happening and I think you really should be proud of this council and your city staff. They are an awesome staff and your community. And I'm asking you for your vote so I can continue working with you because it's pretty exciting.
Thanks, Bonnie. Holly, your closing remarks?
So I want to again thank the chamber for hosting this event, the sponsors, the moderator, my fellow candidates, and all of the community members. This annual event, this particular forum, is one of the very few ways that all of the council candidates can get together and talk about the important topics and let all of you, the citizens of Brookings, learn a little bit about us. And so this is a really important event and so I thank all of you for participating. Over the last eight years, it truly has been amazing to serve all of you. Throughout my time on council, I have just been absolutely inspired by the resilience and determination of our community. There is no doubt that this is a very special place and I'm very fortunate to be able to call this place my home. I am deeply committed to the future of our city and the well-being of the people who live here. When we all work together, we really do create a community that all other cities aspire to be in. So I'm excited at the future prospects for continuing that creative way of thinking in Brookings. If reelected, I do promise to continue to listen, collaborate, foster a welcoming community, support sustainable growth, and act as a responsible steward of our city resources. I invite you all to learn as much as you can about each of the candidates on the ballot, the proposed language for the charter changes, and then use your voice. Go to the polls, vote. As a reminder, early voting starts on Monday, the 24th. It's on the first floor of the city council or the city-county government center. And then election day will be April 8th and anyone can vote at any of the polling locations that will be open that day. So just get out there, learn as much as you can. And if you have questions for any of us, please feel free to reach out to us directly. Most of us have websites, we have our email, we have our phone number available so that you can get in contact with us. There are many days that I sit down for a cup of coffee with someone who calls and says, hey, there's this thing happening in my neighborhood and I want to know what you think about it. And that is one of the most wonderful ways that I can learn directly about what's important to the members of our community. I always say, we don't know what we don't know. And so it's really important for each of you to be in touch with us. Let us know what's important so that we can represent your dreams for Brookings. So I would appreciate your vote on or before April 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. Al, your closing remarks?
Well, just to clarify, Bonnie, I am getting up there in age. I'm one injury away from setting off metal detectors, but I'm going to try to do the best I can to prolong that. In closing, like I say, listen, learn, lead is, that's what I'm about. If anybody has anything they want to talk about, I am more than willing, able to talk about. The one nice thing about this, I've met a lot of coffee groups over the last two years. I have hopes that one day I will enjoy the taste of coffee, but I can stomach it if that's what it takes. Like I said, I took out a petition to run for city council. My goal is to get elected so that we can do great things for the future of Brookings. We have a lot of great things going for us and I think we can build on that and we can help move forward to make Brookings even better than it is now. All of that starts with policy, procedures, and ordinances and all that stuff. We need to make it as easy and accessible as possible for people coming to our community to achieve their dreams. We want them, as advertised, to bring their dreams. But then as elected officials, the number one priority would be to help those dreams become achievable. So whatever we can do to help people achieve those dreams, that would be the number one concern. As stated, early voting starts next week. I am out and about in the community all day, every day. If anybody has any questions, half of eastern South Dakota has my cell phone already. If you want it, I'll give it to you. You can call my office, you can message me on Facebook. I can guarantee you that I will be available. So if you have anything, please reach out and thank you for having this this morning. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Again, we'd like to thank the Public Affairs Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, our sponsors, Vision Brookings Cool Beans for the coffee, and Brookings Economic Development Corporation. This will be replayed, I believe, on YouTube if you want to go back and review the answers in the comments. You could skip mine and just go to theirs, fast forward through that sort of stuff. Again, I want to thank the candidates for their answering 12 questions. We had more that we could have got to. Time limits us. I want to thank again these candidates, quality candidates. Let's give them a round of applause. And one last housekeeping, the city wants us out of the building very quickly because they'd like to lock up and shut down this video equipment. So before the lights go out, if you'd like to answer questions, the candidates will be out in the parking lot. Thank you.